In Bucksport. Questions may be submitted prior to or during the meeting by emailing slesard@bucksportmain.gov or by calling 469-7368. Roll call, Jim?
Mr. Easton.
President?
Mr. Morrison.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bissonette?
Here.
Mayor Stewart?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Wright?
Here.
Next is a presentation of town council recognitions. We have one. Resolution in honor of Frank Dunbar. Whereas Frank Dunbar was a lifelong resident of the town of Bucksport, and whereas Frank Dunbar served his country in the U.S. Army from 1958 to 1961, and whereas Frank Dunbar served at the state level on the Maine Inland Fisheries and Wildlife Advisory Commission, and was a firearms instructor for the state of Maine, and whereas Frank Dunbar served his community on the Bucksport Town Council, the Bucksport Economic Development Committee, and the Board of Assessment Review, and whereas Frank Dunbar was involved in many local organizations, including the Bucksport Rod and Gun Club, Bucksport Historical Society, the Veterans Memorial Committee, and the Chaplain of American Legion Post 93, and whereas Frank Dunbar operated barbershop in Bucksport for 54 years, whereas his daughter Diana Roberts has continued the operation of the barbershop, and June 25th, 2022 will be the 60th consecutive year of business for Frank's barbershop. Therefore, be it resolved by the Bucksport Town Council, in-town council assembled, to designate June 25th, 2022 as Frank Dunbar Day in Bucksport in honor of his contributions to his country, his state, and his community, as well as to commemorate the 60th anniversary of the small business he started in Bucksport. How the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.
I'm going to ask the question. Is this going to be an annual Frank Dunbar Day, or is it just this year?
Just this one day. Yep. For the 60th anniversary. Next is consider minutes of previous meetings. We have town council minutes from 5:26 to 22. How the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second. No questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Correspondence with an Orland Police Call on May 28th, 2022, and Great Mountain Conservation Trust invitations on July 13th, 10:00 a.m. at the Dead River Gate in Wildlands, and a 5:00 p.m. dinner paddle at Alamos Lake Side Inn. There's information on that in your packets.
If anyone wishes to attend either of those, the dinner particularly, please let me know so I can let them know for ahead count.
Next is ordinance that's considered or introduced. We have none. Item seven, discussion items. I'd like to have a motion to add an item on the agenda.
Motion to add an item on the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? YMCA is here to make a presentation. Peter Rama.
It's been a few years since we've done that last time. Yeah. Good evening, everyone. Finally, glad to be able to present in front of you guys instead of over Zoom. Can't believe it's already been over two years since I came to town. So thank you for having us tonight. Thank you for all the continued support you give us. So just kind of a recap of last year of 2022, sorry, 2021. Last summer for Young Bucks Summer Camp, we had 115 kids come through our doors. That was including the partnership with the RSU 25 Summer School Program. We also had a basketball camp for you the kids. We had, I think it was around 30 kids come in for a few hours, work with myself, Coach Deans, and Coach Keniston, some of the RSU players. Last year, the pool had over 5,000 people come and visit from various towns throughout the state, even a couple from out of state. Fall soccer, our kids were able to play some surrounding Hancock County teams, kind of introduce travel sport. We primarily played in Bucksport, Ellsworth, or Blue Hill against other surrounding towns. In football, we were able to get back into tackle with 5th and 6th grade where we played predominantly Ellsworth or Camden, five town up until Halloween. The new multipurpose workout machine that you guys gave us permission to order along with the dumbbells arrived in the fall, and since then has been absolutely adored and loved by the members that come in and work out. From the 20 different workouts on the multipurpose to just the feeling and the brightness and workout of the dumbbells. We had a successful men's basketball league, even with the COVID guidelines set by the RSU, didn't have an issue as far as the people playing, accommodating to those rules and guidelines. In winter time, we had afternoon with Santa. It was a huge success. We had around 50 kids come through, spend some time with Santa, take some photos if their parents wanted to take one, play some games, do some arts and crafts, and we plan to continue doing that next year and years to come. This year, we grew the basketball program from just rec to travel basketball. We started with 5th and 6th grade, girls and boys. The boys did fairly well, competed in a tough division, got knocked out in the quarterfinals of the playoffs. And the girls, they made it all the way to the championship, coming up just short against a tough junior team. We also brought a tournament, youth tournament to Bucksport in February. It was a big hit for 5th and 6th grade and 7th and 8th grade travel teams, and I already have those teams wanting to sign up and come back to town next year. This spring, we started an in-house competitive cheer team with Coach Lauren at the high school. She put them two days a week for about six to eight weeks, learning a routine, and on May 31st, they put that routine on for their families to come and watch. We had new LED lights put into the pump room. As you guys know, the new LED lights are in for the pool house. The electrician can't get in until the end of June, but he is more than welcome to be able to come in after pool hours. We had another successful men's basketball league again. Think we ended up getting two more teams this spring compared to fall. Also at the pool, the pool house is getting repainted on the floor. They just finished off the trim, have a couple more spots on the floor to fill out, and then also the pool is getting repainted this coming week as well. Mike and his team have done a nominal job, getting the pool ready, and the filter system to paint work that needs to be done. Also this spring, we awarded two Bucksport seniors scholarships for college through the Bucksport Soccer Club Fund that Richard Sprague left in our hands and asked us to carry on, and we'll continue carrying that on. Our look on 22, 23. This summer, we have all of our camp counselors coming back. We have already surpassed our projected numbers for summer camp. We currently sit at 78 kids signed up, and that is not including the RSU 25 Summer School Program. Our pool staff is all filled, thanks to my colleague, Brian Townsend. He's the aquatics director for all three YMCA branches, and I'd like to say Bucksport is very fortunate to be filled, staff-wise, compared to other towns out there to either reduce hours because of staff shortage. So I'd like to thank Brian and pass that on to you guys. As far as extracurricular stuff, we'll continue with trunk or treat. We're going to keep that in Bucksport. This past fall, we did that through CoolSport. From what I understand, that's moving to Orland. We're going to keep that trunk or treat right here in Bucksport for our kids. And I've already briefly talked with Jim about using the high school parking lot, again, that we did the first year of the pandemic. We'll continue with happening with Santa, Easter icon, and then father-daughter dance as well, which Caitlin is prepping to have going on at the end of the month this year. Starting in the fall, we'll have, get back to group fitness classes. I've had a lady reach out to me who's getting certified to teach. She's willing to start it in the fall, you know, two or three nights a week, a couple classes. In the summer, we're hoping to start a kind of an introduction, introduction to personal fitness for kids with Brody, our personal trainer, kind of teach them how to properly lift, how to use the weight room, just all around personal fitness. In the summer, we're having our first annual Down East Showdown. It's a high school tournament strictly for high school teams, varsity and JV. First weekend is July 15th, that'll be in Ellsworth, and then July 22nd will be here in Bucksport. There's already 38 teams between the two weekends signed up for it. We look to expand on tackle football, welcoming back 3rd and 4th grade tackle. I know that went away for a little bit, and from my eyes, it's kind of set some of our kids back, starts tackling football and safety-wise. So that's our plan to bring that back this fall and teach the kids properly how to tackle safe, hit safe, get hit, and all that fun stuff that comes with football. Also working on starting a travel soccer program, whether it's just Bucksport or we combine between the three branches to represent the Hancock County and our area. And this winter, we'll look to expand on travel basketball. I've already had a mother interested in coaching a 3rd and 4th grade team, and also opening it up to 7th and 8th graders for the 6th graders that participated this past season, and getting Bucksport back name out there in basketball and other sports, and giving our kids that exposure and experience at a competitive level throughout the area and throughout the state. Any questions?
Questions?
A couple of years ago, there was some pretty serious issues with the skating rink up there. Has anything been done as far as getting that into shape or use it under the weather?
We have been able to use it. This year, we did find that there was perhaps some cracks in the ground, and even on the boards, there was, when we were filling it, on the end closest to the health center is where the cracks were and where the leak was happening. We're looking to this year at kind of creating something that we don't have to bother the structure of the rink, do anything to kind of shrink it, to avoid those crack areas, make it easier to maintain or convenient, that way we can get it open sooner for the public. But there is further discussion and talk as far as the issues at the ice rink.
Anything else? What's your membership in this center?
My membership?
How many folks do you have?
Not off the top of my head, but I can...
107.
107.
Who's kind of...
Maybe you are, Peter. Thank you. You're very welcome.
Folks, I just want to say one thing. I think Bucksport is really fortunate right now, this summer especially, with Matt and Brian and the pool having a full staff. Looking at the news, you're seeing that a lot of places are reducing their times for swim lessons, and the swim lessons and registrations are pretty impressive already. So hats off to Matt and his team. It could be great, so.
Now, are those Bucksport folks that are your lifeguards, or?
No, some, for the most part, they're from outside of town. They all on their school swim team and national swimmers, and CPR certified as well. I think we half of them are going to be teaching swim lessons.
You see no applications from anybody in Bucksport, or is that reasonable?
Not necessarily. I did have a few people that wanted to get certified to be a lifeguard, did some information on the week that Brian was doing him, and from what Brian's only known in Bucksport, sure that.
Thank you. Next is request for consideration of a skate park in Bucksport.
There's a packet that was submitted by a group of people who are interested in doing a skate park in Bucksport, and I indicated to them that I was putting it on the agenda to see if the council would refer to committee for review and discussion. Generally, we, these kind of things end up at a committee level before, but they start with the council, so you can say, yeah, that's, we'll send it along, or, you know, we're not even going to do that. So the question is, are you open to sending this to infrastructure for discussion?
Anybody opposed?
Okay, so if we could schedule an infras, well, that's later, but the 14th of July is our next council meeting, if you stay with what you've decided not to have a second meeting in June, and so if you had an infrastructure committee at 6:00, I could let them know that.
I bet we can schedule that.
Okay.
Next is agenda items. We have a couple resolves about the budget. We will take those up after the public hearings. First resolve we'll take up here is resolve 2022-55 to set the date when taxes are due and payable, FY 22-23. Would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Next is resolve 2022-56 to set the interest rates to be paid for unpaid, for taxes unpaid. Would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second. Any questions? The interest rate?
It's the same.
All in favor? Opposed? Next is resolve 2022-57 to accept the salt bid from New England Salt at $70 a ton. Would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second. Any questions?
This is an ouch bid. It's, that's not 24 cents, it's $24 per ton more, and that's entirely related to the cost of getting the commodity from where it is to Searsport and then trucking it because of the cost of fuel. It will require a modification of the way that we do some road maintenance for this winter in terms of apportioning salt within our budget, but because the last few years have been lighter use, I think we'll still be okay, but this is, this is the lowest bid that New England Salt had for any community was ours. You know, the other ones were all 72 and to 80, and another community that had gone out for bid got bids between 83 and $98 a ton from companies. This salt prices, because of the transportation cost of getting them to where they're going and then getting it trucked are just...
But the last year, we were part of a state group deal that kind of backed by...
Well, this is the state bid, but it's not, it's the company that rescued us last year. The other one is, did not bid for us at a lower rate than this.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Passing. Next is resolve 2022-58 to approve the union contracts for police dispatch, fire, EMS, and public works for 2022-23 to 2024-25. Would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second. Questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Like I say, we'll take out the other resolves when we get to the public hearings. Next is resignations, appointments, assignments, and elections. Three resignations, Officer Gerald Lowe, Officer Christopher McGillis, and Officer Caleb Need to accept those, or?
It's...
Take a motion? Motion approved. Second. All those in favor? Opposed? I understand you have one that's staying behind to help part-time, though?
Yeah.
Okay. Have no quick claims, charges, or deeds, and next is town manager report.
I've been appointed by Governor Mills as the Chair of the State Board of Environmental Protection. This is my 13th year serving on that board, and I served as its Chair from 2008 to 2011 as well. I will be taking any time required for the board beyond their regular monthly meeting as vacation time, so as not to place a greater burden on the town from my work on that board. The roof on the bathhouse at the pool has developed significant leaks over the winter and requires immediate resurfacing to avoid further interior damage to walls and electrical system of the building. Investigation shows that there is no ice water shield under the existing shingles. We obtained two quotes from vendors who could do the job on an immediate basis since the pool opens on June 20th. Since there is not another council meeting this month, I would like to add an item to the agenda to award the pool roof project to MPS Construction for a cost of $19,200 to come from Recreation Reserve. The other bidder on the project was Tracy's Contracting, and that was for $21,200.
Take a motion to run item on the agenda?
Motion to add an item on the agenda?
Second. All those in favor? Have resolve 2022-59 to accept a bid for a pool repair. Would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Officer Matthew Schmidt and Axel graduate from the Maine Criminal Justice Academy K-9 program tomorrow, and I will be attending the graduation ceremony in Vassalboro. Both officers have done an exceptional job in completing this training successfully. We look forward to Officer Schmidt being back in Bucksport and having Axel as a new member of the Bucksport Public Safety Team. Congratulations to all RSU 25 seniors who will be graduating on Friday, June 10th. We wish them well as they head off into this next chapter of their lives. Congratulations also to the 8th graders at the middle school who are having their promotion to high school event this evening. Indeed, our children are our future, and we are fortunate to have an excellent educational system locally to support them. I was in contact with Tom Stevens, who is our contractor for the cemetery work in regard to the work in Oak Hill and Molton Cemeteries, and there is a possibility that he will begin work, begin that work next week. I am waiting for confirmation on that, but we look forward to getting that started. A reminder for upcoming events between now and our next council meeting, the Pride Festival on June 18th will be on the waterfront with activities from 2:00 to 9:30, and the Bay Festival will be held from July 2nd to 4th with music, food, fireworks, and many other And as I've stated, a reminder that unless something arises that cannot wait until July 14th, the June 23rd council meeting has been canceled. Perk is bypassing waste from today through June 19th to Juniper Ridge landfill due to equipment problems, and I only bring that to your attention because we are talking about ongoing solid waste options, and when perk is down, there is no other option, so. The economic development director, our code enforcement officer, and I met with a prospective buyer for the Spring Fountain this week. We look forward to working with this group if the sale moves forward as they have planned. Assessor Caitlin Eldridge has submitted the Planning Partnership Initiative grant to MDOT that was approved for submission by the town council. In addition to that, MDOT has approved a project that Main Street, Bucksport, and the Beautification Committee will be sponsoring, which is a temporary pocket park on Main Street near the Fort Knox Park Inn for the summer as a pilot to see how well-received or utilized it would be. And as an update on that, that may or may not happen depending on how quickly things can get done, because it was a limited time that it could be there so that it didn't interfere with a Planning Partnership Initiative grant review that would be done at that time. It's a, right now, it's a maybe for the second piece. I've been asked to speak at a virtual Maine Community Leaders Call sponsored by the Maine Center on Aging and AARP Livable Maine on June 15th. I've been asked to discuss how age and ability-friendly Bucksport engages with business to enhance accessibility. This will include our Business Accessibility Grant Program as well as the current Planning Partnership Initiative grant. I met with representatives of the Bucksport Historical Society to discuss issues related to the long-term care and maintenance of Bucksport's historical artifacts. The current building needs significant work to remain as a viable location. Several years ago, a proposal was done that raised the building and put it on a foundation closer to Main Street and created a downstairs that was envisioned for use as public restrooms and an information center. That proposal did not move forward because of the significant price tag that was associated with it. Society representatives will be asking for a meeting with the council infrastructure committee when they have more information on the work that needs to be done and the estimated costs. I've provided you with a copy of informational card that the society puts at locations in the community to engender interest in Bucksport history, which is the card that I left for you with the... And finally, a reminder that RSU 25 school budget validation election and the state primary election are being held on Tuesday, June 14th from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Jewett And we had one, you had an email, it's related to the budget, I copied off for you, that was in regard to Chris Johnson's recommendation related to adding Riverview to the budget.
I understood that for next year's budget, though, correct?
Yeah.
23, 24.
Yeah.
Yep. Thank you. All right. You'd like to add another item on the agenda? Take a motion to add an item on the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? I have a pole permit for Steve Gould, owner, you can dig it, for a pole that needs to go out on the town farm road. And again, this needs to get done prior, so without me again for a month, so be good. Would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. All right, we will have a couple of public hearings here. Actually, first, I'm just going to jump down. I have an application for a liquor license for the Bucksport Golf Club. Would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? I also have a liquor license for Cali Fortune Incorporated, DBA, the Bucksport House of Pizza. Would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Thank you. All right. I have a public hearing on the sewer budget, 2022-2023. Public hearing is now open. Any questions, comments? Hearing none? What was that public hearing? I'd like to act on resolve 2022-52 to adopt the sewer budget for FY 22-23. Would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Also like to adopt resolve 2022-53 to set the sewer user rates for FY 2022-23. Would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second. All those in favor? I have a public hearing on the Marina budget, 2022-23. Public hearing is now open. Any comments?
I have a question.
Yep.
Have we ever considered putting Mike on, being on full-time and giving him benefits?
That has been a discussion between Mike and I, and the fact that the waterfront is somewhat dormant at this point because we don't have year-round docking facilities at that. I have, had indicated that, that the town dock project that would create a more year-round presence for waterfront use would be the time that I would discuss that. Those have been engineered, we're looking for funding, but that is, we added the 20 hours a week in the winter when the marina's not open over what it originally was, which was just a summer position, plus the harbor master's stipend, but that's been, my discussions with him has been related to the fact that when the waterfront was more active on a year-round... waterfront was more active on a year-round basis, that with the presence of that dock, that that would be the appropriate time to bring to the council the idea of adding another full-time employee.
No, you mean year-round. I mean, how are you going to do this in the winter when you say year-round?
The, the purpose of the new dock is that the floats are in year-round. There, it extends the season significantly, allows for Coast Guard usage in the winter and the bar, you know, there's other things that can utilize it in the winter. It also expands our ability to, to offer service, which would require more work by my, to prepare for the, the more active season, shall we say, when the marina and the town dock portion are in operation.
Okay, I have a question, even though, I mean, he works for the marina, he's ahead of that, but I know we've had problems in the past trying to get help at the highway in the winter. Is that something that we could incorporate him into that so that would bring him on Is he the only employee in the town that doesn't have benefits and full time?
No. Our senior center director does not, is not a full-time position. That's 20 hours a week and does not have...
I knew that the senior was.
That, that one doesn't, we have a number of, of call positions and reserves that are not, that are not full-time year-round as well.
Which I do understand. I was just thinking if there's, I mean, I know this, they always have a hard time with the highway of trying to get somebody to snowplow the sidewalks or something, if that was something we could incorporate that and we wouldn't have to worry about that in the winter trying to find somebody. It's just a thought.
If, if the council would like to discuss that as part of staffing, I'm certainly open to that. That is, it isn't that I'm not, that I was honestly thinking of him as an employee at the waterfront as opposed to a more patchwork kind of thing.
All those in favor? Resolve 202254 to adopt the town marina budget for FY 202223. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Open up a public hearing for the general fund budget 202223. Resolve 202251 to approve the general fund budget for FY 202223. All those in favor? Opposed?
Which one are we approving?
The one that's in the packet.
Oh. The original or the revised?
The one that we just, that we've talked about that's in the packet.
Okay. Sorry, didn't understand.
Did we have, did you get the vote?
I didn't get a motion.
Well, I thought, we don't need one with a public hearing, right?
You get one there and all.
Oh, I didn't get one? Sorry. Let's start fresh. Resolve 202251 to approve the general fund budget for FY 202223. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second. All those in favor? One, two?
Any chance for comments or...
We had the public hearing, that was what the comment was.
Nobody knew which, we were talking about a public hearing.
I announced it was the public hearing for the...
Nobody knew which budget we were talking about.
The 202223 general budget.
There's two of them.
There's one that's on the agenda, there's one.
Okay. We don't know that. We haven't seen it, we don't know what it is, we don't know anything about it.
It's been posted.
The, the general fund budget is the budget that we've spent the majority of the time talking about for the past three months that, that involves the town departments. Sewer is a separate department. The marina is an enterprise account that's funded not from taxation. General fund encompasses every other thing that we've discussed. The budget that's in the packet is the budget that was, that you have prepared right along. It does not include any, any changes. The, the information that was requested by, at the last meeting has been provided. In order to accommodate that, someone would have to make a motion to reduce the budget by the amount that was identified in what I sent out to you. If the, if the proposal is to adopt the budget as it was discussed without any change to what it was done, then it's what's in the packet.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Can we still need a motion? I'll make a motion, pass that quickly. We have a motion, we have a second?
We had a motion on the floor, I think it passed as it's consented.
Uh-uh. And you have a second as well? I apologize for being...
Got it.
So we good to go right now?
I think so, ready for a vote.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Discussion items not on the agenda for the council of republic? Anybody in the, on the public have anything? Anybody in the council? All right. Upcoming public hearings and committee topic assignments, July 14th for a infrastructure committee, 6 o'clock. I don't know who's on the infrastructure committee.
Yep.
Okay. 6 o'clock work?
Yep.
That'd be to discuss the skate park.
Could we add the animal shelter to that as well since that's...
Yep.
That's another thing.
That's an infrastructure thing too.
Yeah, it is.
Yep. That work for you guys?
What's...
If we want to look at...
The relocation or...
Yeah.
Yep, yep. Item 15's adjournment?
Let's adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you.